Stand for the flag salute by the Sarasota Military Academy under the direction of Colonel Ben Weiss. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. It's always wonderful to see our young people. I would like to welcome our student rep, Benai Kanuro. Would you tell us a little bit about yourself and Pineview School?
Yeah, hello, everyone. I'm a senior at Pineview School. I've been going there since third grade. For the last four years, my primary goal has been to increase the diversity of the school. It's a problem that I hold very dear to my heart. And thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. And I understand we'll be seeing you next month as well.
Yes.
Great. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to welcome the students from the Sarasota County Boys and Girls Club, the STAR Leadership Training Program. STAR stands for Students Taking Active Roles, which is a training program created to encourage youth to take active roles in their community. I would like to invite the superintendent and any available board members to stay after this meeting to meet with students for questions and answers. We have some really interesting questions from you all, so we look forward to this. Our special presentation today is Bucks for Bike. Would Roy Sprinkle please come forward to the podium for the presentation?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to come up here and do a fun and positive presentation from Human Resources for a change. Valida Clark is with me because today we are working on a campaign we started last year where we set out to get a bicycle, actually two bicycles for every one of our Title I schools. We did achieve that goal again this year, so we have 22 bicycles.
We did.
That we will be distributing today. We have administrators and representatives from every one of the schools to receive them and hopefully take them with them today. And as you know, every cause has a champion, and that champion for Human Resources has been Valida. She has made this work with help, and I will let her recognize some of the others that have helped us get these out, and we will hopefully make some kids very happy this year.
Thank you. This has truly been a team effort. I had Andrea Jordan, who helped me go around and collect money from the landings. That day was a truly amazing day, walking by and having everybody waiting, walking through state reports and IT, literally were standing up as we came through with their money in hand to donate. We had Food and Nutrition who did a fundraiser. We had Purchasing who did collections. Facilities did collections. And very, very grateful to all of the support I got from Facilities. They helped me pick up bikes, get them to STC, who put them together, get them here so we can get them donated. And then the STC Manufacturing Class made the tags for all of the bikes. So each bike is personalized for the student who is receiving it. There is a helmet that was donated by the Safety and Security Department for every bike, and the SROs collected money, and one SRO actually donated a whole bike on his own. So this has been a labor of love across the entire district. It has been pretty phenomenal, and I want to thank you for giving me the chance.
Thank you. This has been a really tough endeavor that you exceeded. You really wanted to start it out with one bike, and you ended up with enough for two bikes. That's dedication and perseverance. Thank you very much for making those children smile.
Thank you.
If we could have those schools that are represented come up and collect their bikes, we will take them out. Thank you. You'll see the school logo on the front as well. We have a Glen Allen. Cranberry.
She's got to quit giving us these nice pens up here. I want to take them home with me. Did you get one like this?
No.
I like it. Yeah, you do. It's in the... Yes? A nice pen. Quit giving us nice pens.
Thank you. Next, this is our hearing of citizens. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak.
Superintendent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I just had a few acknowledgements for some of the amazing things occurring in our schools by our staff and students, and I wanted to kind of bring that to the forefront. So first, I'd like to recognize Principal Mark Grossenbacher and the students at Inglewood Elementary for their amazing work and community spirit. The Inglewood Elementary Show Choir competed in the Universal Studios Music Festival, ISA, and won the Elementary School Division. The school robotics team placed fifth overall out of 18 in the middle school division. Yes, this is an elementary school, and they placed fifth overall in the middle school division. They also won the judges' award for having the most creative design at the competition. In addition, students, teachers, and community members participated in the Rotary Meals of Hope last weekend, generating more than $28,000 in support and thousands of meals packed by the school community. So, well done Eagles. Next, I'd like to congratulate Principal Jamie Lowitz and the incredible teachers, aides, and students at Oak Park School on a successful holiday bazaar last week. The holiday bazaar is a wonderful way for students to not only showcase the arts and crafts and business skills they learn every day in the school, it's also a celebration as students from the Work Study Program hone their skills at business, finance, communications, marketing, and relationship building. Attendees were given an extra special treat as current Teacher of the Year Shane Suesi, along with the Panther Choir, performed holiday favorites. If you didn't make it this year, I highly recommend attending next year, as this truly is an exemplary program at Oak Park School. Excuse me. I'd also like to recognize Principal Cynthia Thro and her team of extraordinary teachers and staff at Atwater Elementary for their exceeding expectations nomination from the East Coast Technical Assistance Center. Atwater was recognized due to the following criteria: ELA and math achievement, ELA and math learning gains and lower quartile gains, ELA and math achievement in minority subgroups, science achievement, school grade they went from a B to an A in the 18-19 school year. Atwater School represents just one of the 29 exceeding expectations schools out of the 1,972 Title I schools in the state. Alta Vista, Lamarck, and Cranberry were previous nominees of this award, so congratulations to everyone at Atwater. And lastly, I want to thank Principal Matt Gruel and the caring and supportive staff at Brookside Middle School during a time of grief and life celebration. Just before the Thanksgiving holiday, they lost a member of their student body. But through Matt's leadership, the school community raised funds to support the family with food, care packages, and funeral costs. So our thoughts and prayers go out to the students, family, and the Brookside School community. So that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. It's squeaking. All right, now it's hearing of citizens. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. When the time of flash is yellow, one minute remains, and you need to begin to summarize. You must stop speaking when the buzzer rings. Please note that the respect for divergent viewpoints and civility will be shown at every board meeting. Whether you agree or disagree with the speaker, you should listen politely and respectfully without making any sounds of approval or disapproval, including clapping. This is allowed. Per State Statute 1001.3723, anyone causing a disruption will first be given a warning, and if the conduct does not stop, you will be removed from the chambers. First up is Tom Walker.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Walker. I've been a resident of Sarasota since 1993. And recently, I read that the Sarasota School District has canceled plans to establish the first community partnership schools at Gocio Elementary and a majority Hispanic school. And I know others will be speaking about this, so I'll be brief. But I have heard a lot about this concept, and I've heard people from Orlando who talked about how wonderful it was for them. And I think you, this is an idea of yours, 5-0 to go ahead with this application. But if you put it off or decide not to take it up, then that means that $80,000 of state-funded planning grant money is gone. And worse, the Gocio loses its partners, which would be Children's Home Society of Florida, the University of South Florida, Center Place Health, which would have participated and also given a 25-year commitment, I think, to strengthening the community and the school. So if you backed out of that application, and I'm sorry, I'm not all that informed about it, but if you backed out because you were worried about what the next superintendent candidate might think about it, I would suggest that, since it was your idea and unanimously supported it, and other people say it's such a great idea, why not go ahead and do it, and then inquire of the candidates whether they support community partnership schools? If they don't, then maybe that tells you something about them. But I think it's a good idea, and I commend you for going forward, and you could reinstate the application. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Reina Bazini.
Good afternoon. My name is Rona Bazini, and I've been coming to Sarasota since 1960. And I'm a permanent resident now. About three years ago, a group of us headed by Carol Lerner formed POPS, Protect Our Public Schools. As the name indicates, our mission is to support public schools. My task was to attend all the board meetings. It's been interesting. There's a saying that growing old is not for wimps. I think that could also be applied to those of you who serve on the school board. Thank you. There's a quote attributed to Thomas Jefferson, "An educated citizenry is a vital requisite for our survival as a free people." We believe a strong public school, which gives all children equal opportunity for a quality education, is essential to meet that goal. We also recognize that public school has changed, as has society, significantly over the years. Gradually, the schools have taken over many of the roles that used to be reserved for parents. The population of the students that we serve has greatly expanded, and schools have struggled to meet these additional demands. In addition to the problems facing all public schools, Sarasota has been dealing with its own turmoil. The one positive aspect during this time was that you, our school board, unanimously voted to support seeking the $80,000 Community Partnership School grant. Now, this is not some project that was scribbled on a napkin in a bar during happy hour. This project had multiple partners who have worked assiduously for over a year putting together this well-prepared plan for Gocio Elementary Title I school to become Sarasota's first community partnership school. I, for one, find it outrageous that this application has been pulled. It was ready to go. By pulling the application, the project will be set back long enough that it may never come to fruition. I've sent all the school boards a copy of an article by Carrie Seadman that appeared in the Sarasota Herald Tribune. She's done a yeoman's job of outlining some of the history of community partnership schools and their relevance and importance to the Sarasota community. It puzzles me that, given the opportunity to implement this positive project, it's being pulled. I implore you to rethink the pulling of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Williams.
Assistant Superintendent and Chief Academic Officer Laura Kingsley provided a rather pathetic excuse for canceling the funding of the Community Partnership Program for Gocio Elementary School. She attributed it to the lack of having a superintendent for the Sarasota School District. Clearly, since she had the authority to cancel the funding, she had the authority to leave it in place. In fact, these academic program decisions have been almost solely hers to make because of her position as chief academic officer in addition to assistant superintendent. Educational programs, especially those that are likely to significantly enhance student outcomes, should be championed, not buried, particularly at a time like this when we need some points of light. Any superintendent that is hired must be given a clear mandate to embrace and support programs that are beneficial to our students, especially our students who are most in need. If they are not on board with such programs, they shouldn't be hired in the first place. We need a visionary leader and a person of action to make sure innovative educational programs achieve success. Currently, 58% of Sarasota 3rd graders are not proficient in reading. Half of Sarasota's elementary schools are Title I low-income schools. Almost 60% of Sarasota students qualify for free or reduced lunch, an indicator of family poverty. Community partnership schools help fill a needed void when it comes to wraparound services, particularly critical to educational success when poverty is an issue. As reported in the November 22 Herald Tribune, quote, "Studies of community schools that have been running for five years or longer have demonstrated higher standardized reading and math scores, better attendance rates, and greater parental involvement. At Gocio Elementary, the University of South Florida would have provided the elementary school with technical assistance, student interns, training and development, and assessment and evaluation. Children's Home Society would have acted as the school's fiscal agent, and Center Place Health would have taken the role of the federal qualified health center, providing students with behavioral and physical health services on campus." These were 25-year commitments to support our public education, not private charter nonsense. Not only has the funding been cut, but the commitments of those organizations to support the community school were destroyed by Kingsley's actions. It is incumbent upon the school board, the Acting Superintendent and Ms. Kingsley, to immediately repair the damage that was wrought and make sure the funding and the commitments from the other participating institutions are restored so that the program can be underway no later than the 2021 school year. This program should also be instated for the ME Booker Elementary-
Thank you very much.
-and the Tuttle Elementary Schools.
Thank you. Michael Hawthorne.
Two, two, here, starting here, here. One, two, three, four, five. I apologize. I don't have but one extra to look at. I think Art is familiar with this, so he doesn't need to see this. This is something that you all need to see per your meeting earlier today. And I will start when everyone has a work-for-hire agreement slash assignment of copyright that's been given out at Booker High School. My name is Michael Hawthorne. I will let you know, I'm a professional designer. I'm in the field of architectural engineering, design, graphic design as well. I graduated from Purdue University, so my background is extensively in the actual design and on the right of intellectual property and copyrights. Also, knowing contracts, I am a former professional football player, so I do understand that what contracts mean word by word, per attorney, it means it's law. It doesn't mean we're guessing. It means it's law. So I want to actually break something down real quick as it goes to this work-for-hire agreement slash assignment of copyright that are being issued out to the students at the film program in VPA, which my son is in his fourth year and actually just been kicked out of the program, kicked off of his film project because he didn't have this thing signed. So he's isolated in the program he chose Booker High School to go there for. Basically, it says, the works designed here, works described here below, basically are work made for hire. So in terms, when you hear schools, this represents the Sarasota County School Board. And I'm skipping along, and then it says, "To the extent that works are not deemed work made for hire, I irrevocably assign, transfer to school and its affiliates, and assign in perpetuity." That means to death all rights and interests in basically whatever's going on. Then it describes what the works is. It says, "The works shall describe any photos, videos, sound, and audio recordings, editings, artworks, designs, images, scripts, texts, performances, and other pictorial, graphic, and audiovisual works, parts of motion pictures. You'll read the rest." And it says, "With my relationship slash engagement with Booker High School and its film and animation program," this says, "The works shall constitute schools' properties solely and completely, and a school may alter, enhance, license, or sub-license." Okay, at your discretion. So Art Hardy, you said earlier that you are not an intellectual property attorney. Okay, you don't have to be. I'm a professional in that field, so I'm trying to educate you. You mentioned Doug Cherry is, but he doesn't work for the school, so he doesn't deal with education. He deals more in the professional sense. So if you had a business, he deals with a professional sense. So let me go back to, just to break down a little timeline. On August 13, we actually had questions about this thing right here. Me, knowing a father that reads things, I read it out. Okay, August 14, I came here. I spoke with Patty Woods. Patty Woods is Steve Cantiss's administrative assistant, because I knew this was going to be an issue. Where are we today with this issue? Because my son is now basically ostracized in a class he chose Booker High School for. My son said on Monday, last Monday, that he felt like breaking down in class because now he's not able to participate in the filming, in the film groups, because he didn't have this piece of paper that has nothing to do with the educational process in Sarasota County, Manatee County, the state of Florida. Okay? Now, you mentioned something about, you mentioned something earlier about having a special occasion if an artist gave you work and you were doing some work for a certain artist. Why don't these students have the same respect?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Marland.
Hi, my name's Stephen Marland. I'm a volunteer as Big Brother mentor for DJ, which I think you're all familiar with. First, I do want to congratulate the school for all the good things you do and celebrate that. However, right now, I want to paint a little picture. Let's imagine we're playing cards. Imagine you're placed at a table, and no matter what kind of crappy hand you have, everyone folds and says, "Great job. You win." Then one day, they say, "Can't play at that table anymore. We can't afford it. You need to play over there now." You keep playing like you always did, but now you're losing every hand. Imagine how you'd respond to that. Imagine the confusion, the sudden feeling of defeat. And when before, everybody said you were doing okay. Imagine the embarrassment and the shame. That's exactly what happened to DJ at Sarasota County Schools. For the sake of government dollars, kids like him were pulled out of regular classes so they wouldn't count. And then they were told they were okay, until he was abruptly pulled out of that setting and began to fail. For DJ, that happened in the ninth grade. And don't dare suggest a lack of parental engagement. His mother sat in a room of specialists for years and was told everything would be okay. She trusted them. Don't get me wrong. I know there's a lot of good people there, but it was clear that administrative decisions were made that adversely affected the trajectory of many lives for many years to come. And then, even more egregious, they tried to cover it up. And now, you're spending even more money debating whether to fight it, at whose expense. Instead, you should be reaching out to the other families and making them whole. I suspect, you know, all of you have a nice car, go home to a nice, you know, go to a nice home at the end of the day. Your success in your career or business likely started with a good educational foundation. That was taken from DJ and others like him. These children were robbed of the very foundation for their success in life. It will take years and a lot of intervention to recover from that. So when you consider appealing this case, when you get home to your nice home and relax, I want you to think about these lies and how difficult it will be for them to enjoy the same thing, the same types of luxuries. And I want you to remember me and the others who worked very hard in this case, because I promise you, we are not going away. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene Rakay Simpson.
She just stepped out. Could she be skipped in?
Carol Lerner.
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Lerner. I've been talked about a bit today as the chair of Protect Our Public Schools, Minnesota, which everyone knows as POPS. I come to this board meeting today with a very heavy heart. Three weeks ago, leaders of Protect Our Public Schools, Minnesota, and League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC, Sarasota, rejoiced when we learned that the application to transform Gocio Elementary into a community partnership school had been approved on the first round by the bipartisan-supported, state-funded Center for Community Schools. Then, one day later, on November 22, a seven-line email arrived from Dr. Kingsley to myself and to the partners and the other leaders of this effort, and that changed everything. It read, quote, "Given the leadership transition we are now experiencing, the decision was made to pull our application for the Community Partnership School Planning Grant for Gocio Elementary," unquote. No face-to-face meeting, no phone call, just a seven-line email. My heart is heavy, not so much for myself as one of the many community activists and grassroots community groups supporting community partnership schools, or for the other three primary partners who have pledged a 25-year commitment, the University of South Florida, Center Place Health, and Children's Home Society of Florida, or for all of the major Sarasota foundations who wrote letters of support for the grant and were willing to provide funding. My heart is heavy for the children, their families, the teachers, and the community that will lose out. Children at Gocio, a Title I school where 90% of its students are economically disadvantaged, 55% are Latino, 17% are African-American, will lose vital health and education programs and services. Families and the surrounding community will lose broad family supports and services, including health services. Teachers will lose out because they will have to continue being both teacher and social worker to their students, so less time for teaching. And everyone will lose out because they will not reap the benefits of a model that addresses the impact of poverty on students, family, and the community. Sarasota may be an A-rated district, but is not so much for the 50% of Sarasota 3rd grade students who are not proficient in reading. What does POPS, LULAC, and the other groups and individuals supporting community partnership school want the Sarasota district to do next? We would like the district to reapply for the CPS grant next July. That's the next cycle. We hope that that is a first step toward
Thank you. Francesca Tulsky.
I am a Manatee resident, but I am here as a retired Sarasota teacher. I have been a member, active supporter of public education since I retired, and working with Protect Our Public Schools, or POPS, and Carol. A year or so ago, POPS held a forum about the community partnership school model developed by the University of Central Florida. From that forum, a bipartisan effort began to open a community partnership school in Manatee. Superintendent Saunders and their Manatee School Board supported the model, and in August 2019, they opened up the first community partnership school at Manatee Elementary. They understood that a community partnership school is good for everyone: student achievement, the students' families with wraparound services, the educators, the district, and the community businesses. It is a partnership of the district with a nonprofit mental health and health facility, University of Central Florida, and community businesses. Services are provided that help a student and their family achieve their education. Why would Sarasota Support School Board find, fully fund its first community partnership school at Gocio Elementary, and then, without an explanation, as far as I'm concerned, because a superintendent is fired, pull that funding and support? Why can't our administrators, who are still part of this district, implement the plans and continue with a community partnership school? I implore you to reinstate the funding and get this school started. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene Enrique Simpson.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Irene Enrique Simpson, and I am the President of LULAC Sarasota Chapter. We were so surprised when we learned that the funding for the community partnership school was canceled. We had been working on it with POPS for several years diligently, lining up the supporters and the partners for the school. POPS is an education advocacy organization, and they've worked so hard to establish the most significant community-led education initiative in the school district, to bring that state-sponsored community partnership school to model the Sarasota's most at-risk schools. Yet, without warning, the funding was pulled, thrown out the window. And of course, we can't blame any one person, but we do know that children should come first, always. So, let's see. Sarasota's Gocio Elementary School, 90% of which are economically disadvantaged, 55% Hispanics, 17% African-American, 21% are white. And Gocio Elementary is representative of the most disadvantaged schools in North Sarasota County. With poor racially diverse children are concentrated there. In the recent years, the number of children in poverty in Sarasota's public schools has reached 57% of the entire student population, with the most attending district schools located in the neighborhoods that still have lower rental rates. In part, LULAC Sarasota was founded two years ago to help support underrepresented students in local schools, where Hispanics have become the fastest-growing demographic group. Today, 1 in 5 of the 43,000 students here self-describe as Hispanic, and most are concentrated in Title I schools, where majority of the students are on free and reduced lunch programs, an established marker for poverty. The hasty decision to cancel means that the $80,000 school, state-funded planning grant is thrown out the window, but worse, and perhaps a greater value, Gocio Elementary also loses the critical 25-year pledged commitments of core partners like Children Home Society of Florida, USF.
Thank you, thank you very much. Lisa Chaliskas. Sorry if I butchered your name.
My name is Lisa Chaliskas, and I'm a parent and extremely concerned and interested party. I would like to know specifically what you, the school board, are doing to investigate the many equity complaints filed directly by me on behalf of my daughter to Equity Coordinator Al Hareda, Superintendent of Schools Todd Bowden, Executive Director of People's Support Sonia Figueroa Albert, and other senior officials, including Assistant Superintendent Laura Kingsley, involving Riverview High School and the Sarasota Military Academy, involving specific equity complaints dated from 2017, 2018, and 2019. Number two, I'd like to know what the district intends to do after knowingly and acting with deliberate indifference, failing to act, failing to intervene, failing to report, failing to investigate specific hostile discriminatory actions by school officials and district personnel toward a vulnerable student. Where are the independent investigations into these egregious complaints for a minor child? Adult district personnel have alleged infractions, investigations have been undertaken. The school board was notified by me in writing over a period of months of Superintendent Bowden and other senior officials' severe, persistent, and pervasive discrimination, harassment, verbal and physical threats, intimidation, bullying, and coercion against a student. When may I expect a written response and an immediate investigation into these infractions?
Is Mr. Cantiss here? Okay, thank you. Elijah Jason, please.
My name's Elijah Jason, and I'm a senior from Venice High School, and I'm one of the leaders of our local drug-free youth department. About two or three months ago, we have gotten pulled out of the school systems, and we were not allowed to do any testing at schools. And that was probably at a crucial point, because we had our spirit week, nearly days after we missed our first testing. And you could see thousands, not thousands, hundreds of kids go out and party, and they did drugs, and we're losing kids every testing we meet. We've already missed three, and we just missed our December one. Now, I know it has been verbally established to me that there are plans for hopefully re-establishment in January, but I've seen no further coalition on that. And I just wanted to bring it up, to say that, day by day, we're losing kids to drugs and vaping even more than we could, because we got pulled out of the school systems for, to me, an unreasonable point and accusation. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Dan Lowbeck.
10:35 last night, I sent an email to Mickey Ryan, your facilities planning chief, and was disappointed I didn't get a response before 11:00 PM. But seriously, she did respond this afternoon before the meeting. And I don't know how many of you have seen that. Apparently, there were some facts I didn't realize, that these two sites are different than the two sites subject to the development agreement. And perhaps, if it's not too late in the afternoon, I'll be here to talk about that. But, one thing is clear from these proposed purchases. In 1865, Horace Greeley wrote, "Go west, young man, go west." And it is abundantly evident from these site purchases, 60 acres, 65 acres, in addition to the elementary school site that's subject to the development agreement in Lakewood Ranch South. And I'm sure hoping it's not a scheme to abandon that, because you got that for a really good price, the value of the land in 2014. But it's a massive investment, and what's clear is that you don't have the money for it. You don't have the money for it. The fiscal neutrality reports that were part of those developments show about $5 million in impact fees from both of those villages, and, which is far less than the value of even a 20-acre elementary school site. Certainly not enough money to do any construction whatsoever. And yet, when I raise the need to raise impact fees, because they're now at 25% of what was full funding years ago, and construction costs and land costs have gone up since then, one of the very, very lowest, probably the lowest in the state now. And I hope there's audio back there, Mr. Robinson, because this is directed to you as well. All right. All right, good. But, and I know there have been some people that tend to side with the development interests that have opposed impact fees, but if you don't have that money, and yes, your smile, Ms. Ziegler, I'm referring in part to you. If you don't have that money, what you're facing is a neglect of the existing capital needs of the existing schools, because you're going to be funneling all the capital revenue from the state and local sources from taxpayers out east, because of this massive commitment you're making by these large site purchases. And you're looking at a huge new property tax hike. And that has been entertained by a couple of the board members previously about, you know, perhaps let's put in a referendum, a big tax hike. These are not good policies.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Richard Murphy.
Good afternoon, Board, Chair Zucker, Ms. Brown, Ms. Ziegler, Mrs. Goodwin, and Mr. Robinson, and Superintendent, interim. My name is Richard Murphy. I'm from Brayton Beach, Longboat Key, right on the line. Little history. Came up in Henry County, worked in business after high school, decided to go back for a business degree, and then I got involved with the schools and became a school board member 14 years, elected. There, I decided, by working in classroom with teachers when my days are off and making time, I decided to go back in education, change my career. That's what I did. Driving back and forth to West Palm Beach, four nights a week, was pretty tiring whilst working. Became a teacher. 2005, I was on the board and taught in Highlands County Middle School, 6 through 8, four preps a day. Worked under a very good mentor, Darryl Bryan, former superintendent of Hardy County. He was a principal at the time. So, that journey on, I went into administration. 2008, I served as Superintendent of Henry County Schools until '12. There, I worked through the recession, with people like Lori White and a few others. So, that's a little history about me. Then I went to Palm Beach County Schools, where I was recruited by a former mentor of mine, still a mentor, very good mentor. Worked in there, worked in administration with South Tech Schools. South Tech Schools is kind of like Sun Tech, Tech One Studio, basically. Actually, they work together right now. They coordinate programs, planning. My mentor is still there. He's older than me, a few years. He was actually one of my teachers. But anyway, working in Palm Beach County with South Tech Schools, I helped develop some plans to incorporate community partnerships and also other agencies to build a big organization that funded schools, also supported schools and teachers. 2014, I came back to Manatee County, I have a daughter, two kids, and came over to help support her, she was single. Worked at Manatee, taught school there until 16, and then went back to school and started a study, continued education with FAU. So, from that point on, I took some time off, do some studies out of the states, went to California, looked at high poverty and also high-performance school districts, looked at charter schools, and also public converted charter schools. So, that's a little history. What I'm going to talk to you about is the opportunity to serve as interim superintendent, if the board decides to go that way. I'm available. I have a consulting contract in business. I'm very familiar with the whole process. I've worked with everybody in the state, including Wayne Platten and a few others, Bill Vogel, Lori, of course, and universities, served on...
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our hearing of citizens. Do we have any corrections to the consent agenda?
Yes, their approval of the Instructional Classified Personnel Report, an addendum was added after the agenda was published.
May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda with the...
I move for approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. And the vote is 5-0. Now may I have a motion? Oh, no, I got that one. Approval of the minutes?
No, no, no. We go down to new business.
Wait, we're in new business now?
New business. Item number 30.
I wanted to make a, can I make a comment about the consent agenda?
Sure.
Sure, we're past it, though.
I know, I put my thing up with you. I just want to point out that item number 14...
I don't see you here.
I'm right here.
I don't see you up here.
Well, I'm, I'm quickly.
You were on deck.
I have Bridget. I'm sorry, Bridget.
I'm looking at it, and it's not marked.
That's my old seat.
Might be the problem.
Sorry, it's really going to be messy.
They didn't change this.
Okay.
So now we can talk?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to point out that we just voted on item number 14, that allowed for the, a memorandum of understanding between us and First Step, which allows for drug testing, that the young man who'd come from Venice High came and spoke about. That's what I just wanted to point that out to the young man in the audience.
Is he still here?
Yes, he is.
He is. In the green hat.
In the green hat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. May I have a motion on item 35, please? Oh, wait, no, we didn't vote on the other one.
I move that the school board approve the attached contract to purchase a site for future school in Lakewood Ranch as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
We don't allow public comment.
Before.
Bridget, though.
Eric Robinson?
Yes.
I have Bridget Ziegler up here, so...
That's me.
It's you now.
She's Shirley.
I know, she's Shirley. Okay.
This is from before.
I had a comment.
That's why.
Are this a cancel?
No.
If that makes no sense to anyone.
There's a queue up here. No, here, there's a queue up here, who tells me which, who's going to speak next. But unfortunately...
I'm sorry, I cleared.
It's where we used to sit.
We switched seats, and the computer has not caught up to the switch of the seats.
Sorry, I cleared Bridget.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Okay, thank you. You know, I appreciate, so this was discussed at the last workshop and actually put on our agenda to vote on last month, and then we postponed it to gather more information, and for that, I am appreciative. I know that during public comment, there was some suggestion of some elements, and quite frankly, I have had, I had concerns, as I evaluated this in general, of ensuring that we, because our growth has not matched up to what our projections were, and we do have a lot of vacant land quite right now that we purchased before and haven't built, because we haven't demonstrated the need for that. And I think that's important, because I don't want to, I want to ensure that we're prepared. I think the planning, there's a lot of foresight in planning and making sure, especially given the fact that there is limited land in the state of Florida, in large chunks, so that when we do need it, we don't want to realize it too late, and then we're in a harder financial position. it, we don't want to realize it too late, and then we're in a harder financial position. But I also want to balance that with not being in the real estate business. One of the discussions that was brought up as far as these two parcels of land was whether or not the... To build it, because the projection was anywhere from a three-year timeframe, again, that's evaluated as we look at our enrollment data, that whether or not that money has already been allocated in our capital improvement plan, it has not. And so, there are another steps and additional discussions that we, as a board, have to determine beyond just the land. I'm going to approve this, but I do think that there are a number of questions and topics that we need to address at the same time. But I just wanted to highlight that as certain comments were made to...
Mrs. Brown?
I appreciate Mr. Lobeck coming in. I know we run differently than the county, and your time to speak was at the beginning, and I know you've tried to contact us. I have not received Mitzi's... Mickey's response that you were talking about yet. She must have made it to you, open for further discussion. And I think you remember the discussion on the impact fees before, and you know where I'm at on that. But I'll be happy to talk to you after the meeting.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am?
No, it would be me. It's me. I'm Mr. Robinson. Remember, I'm sitting in where Eric sat last time. I would just like to say that I am voting for this. We are going to have some significant growth, we know, in the northern part of the county in the next few years. And I really think next year, we need to look at impact fees again and make some determinations. Because when we first... When we initially reenacted the impact fees, and I know Dan Lobeck hit me over the head with that about six times, I think, it was when we were still in a recession. And I think things are changing. I think they are better and what with the capital budget as it is and the cost skyrocketing today in construction more than ever before, I think that I would like next year to take a look at that and have some discussion at a workshop about impact fees again. But I will be supporting and voting for this.
I will also support this, and I also, as I told you at last meeting, I'm in favor of raising our impact fees. We started very low because of the recession, and I'd like us to reevaluate where we are now. Any other discussion?
Aren't we required to readdress impact fees on a certain timeframe?
Every five years.
Every five years? Hasn't it been that?
It's been about five years? No.
It seems like it's been five years. Although this last year has taken a long time to get through.
It's like three years. All right, please vote.
16, I think.
And the vote is 5 to 0.
Item 36, I move that the school board approve the attached contract to purchase a site for future school in Central County as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
How about if I just raise my hand so you're not confused?
Mrs. Brown?
This is that site. We're already very overcrowded at the schools in that area, Sarasota Middle School and Ashton Elementary, and there's a lot of new growth going in there. So, this is an area that's growing, and we need to be prepared to meet that growth.
Any other discussion? Please vote. There's four up there, and the chair votes yes. So, that's 5 to 0, a vote. I got kicked out of my computer. All right.
5 to 0.
Yeah.
Next up is 37.
Okay.
Yep.
I would move that...
No, somebody, may I have a motion for 37, please?
I move to approve the... To advertise the revised school board policy number 4.18, academic and career planning of the school board policy library as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
A fatal error. That's what that is.
The Russians.
And the vote is 5 to 0. Okay.
Number 38.
Number 38. May I have a motion?
I move for approval of the appointment of Jody Dumas as the Assistant Superintendent, Chief Operating Officer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Brown? Yes, you're right. Of you.
And Eric, I am next, I think.
Some concerns have been brought up to me. Everybody agrees that Jody Dumas is a great guy, that he does facilities and construction very well. But there was some concern on why are we making this appointment now and not putting it out for the notice for other people, because other people might want to apply for an assistant superintendent job. It's awful stepping stone. So, could I ask, you know, our superintendent for an explanation of why we need to do this, why we need to expedite this?
Well... Sorry, I put the microphone on. So, in my opinion, I brought this forward for your consideration. Jody's been doing or wearing two hats now for quite some time, since June. And so, it's, you know, very difficult to wear two hats and juggle balls for a long period of time. And so, if we were to make the appointment permanently, that opens up the ability to fill his former position, which has been vacant for some time now. And it allows us to kind of move forward with a leadership team. And from my perspective, given Jody's past experience as being the department director for transportation facilities, the executive director over facilities and construction, he's going to kill me for this, but he's actually married to a nutritionist who used to be one of our area food service supervisors. So, he's got an in when it comes to food and nutrition. So, the areas that he spends, you know, that he will oversee, he has a lot of direct experience in. And for me, I think experience speaks volumes for your ability to be successful. So, that would be why I would make the recommendation.
The other concern I had... I've been given was about not meeting the requirements of the job and the leadership training. How are we addressing that?
Right, and I agree. You know, you will have to, when you make the vote, affirm that you are voting in lieu of the minimum requirement, that you are waiving the requirement for the master's degree. However, I think Jody is more than willing to accept leadership training. We can send him to get the training in that area. I think everybody can use that anyway. So, I'm more than willing to have that proceed.
And one of the reasons he hasn't been able to do that now is because...
He's been working many hours.
I understand that even for longer than the time that we've appointed him as COO, he's basically been wearing these two hats.
Correct.
And it's his intention is when he gets some relief down there, he will pick up the slack there.
Correct. I mean, I think we can get him leadership training.
Thank you.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Well, I want to say that I'm supporting Jody Dumas for this job, and I do hope that he will get his master's degree and move forward, because that was really the hitch that I heard from some of our administrators.
I'm sorry. I was going to say that I am in support of Jody Dumas being in this job. I think he's been doing a terrific job, and I believe that he's very well qualified for it. I would like to see him get a master's degree and move forward, because that was the question that some of our administrators had when they approached me about this. But you know, Jody is a very busy person. When I first became a school board member, I spent a lot of time with him in facilities, and I just thought he rocked. I just... I mean, I could talk about facilities for hours with groups in the community. I'm not at all sure they wanted me to, but I really felt like we were doing so many wonderful, out-of-the-box things, and a lot of that was because of Jody's leadership. He also runs, you know, an animal refuge, if you will, at home. So, he has... I shouldn't have said that, should I? But I'm proud of you for that. So, you know, he has a lot of things on his plate, and he does them all well. So, I'm happy to vote for this.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Is that me or her?
No, it's me. Whatever.
Which one of you want to speak?
You can go first.
Age before beauty.
I am... So, I... First of all, I have to tell you that personally, before... When Mr. Lumpy left, Scott was someone that I... His name had come forward, and it was... Not Scott, Jody, was someone whose name... His name had come forward, and it was someone I supported. And the actual... The component of... Not that we were involved in that discussion, but I'm just saying that it was something that I supported, and it's relevant for a reason. One was that the concept of the master's degree being a minor requirement was... Did come up, in my opinion, especially... I mean, it shouldn't be lost on anyone. Our operations side of the House is huge. I mean, people... I mean, we're in education. Our goal is education. But when you look at the sides and the magnitude of this, what I would call enterprise, I mean, there is a lot at... As far as the operations side, it's a huge piece of it. However, I think Mrs. Goodwin just did a great job of identifying the various areas that he's worked in and that experience. For me, it doesn't matter how many designations you have behind your name. That does not necessarily make you the right person for the position. It really comes down to a couple of different things, and certainly experience. But I also think, for me, his leadership and good values, and I feel deeply that he has that. There is a part where we're in a... There's no question, we're in a very transitional time at our district. I did have concerns, and I was very appreciative of the very transparent forthcoming conversation I had with him and raised the concerns, because I believe he will be overseeing as COO some critical areas that need improvement, very critical areas, and want to make sure that he is up to that task, because I take them very seriously. And I know that's not easy to do when push comes to shove to make those decisions. But those are priorities for me, and I wanted to be honest and transparent about it. But... And so, then I weighed down to the concept of whether or not it makes sense to wait and continue on this interim, but then the part about filling the job and is it that everyone bubbles up and bears more weight or that we move ahead? And so, I've weighed back and forth, and I honestly, I'm going to support this. I think that... I understand the feeling of having a job posted. There is... We are in a transitional time, and honestly, that doesn't make it permanent for anybody. We're in a transitional time, and that's important. So, that's where I was weighing, because I wanted to say, does it make sense to wait until we have this permanent superintendent? I don't know how long that's going to be. And I think we need stability. I have the faith that you're up to the task. It's a tall task, and I believe you are absolutely committed, and it's indicative of all the work that you've done in the last couple of months, wearing two hats. So, I'll be supporting this.
Okay. Mr. Robinson?
So, when you look at why we have job descriptions, I believe the reason why we have job descriptions is so that we can have somebody from the outside, and we can tell, can this person do this job? I've never met this person before. I need to be able to tell how much experience, what is education, to give me some idea whether this person is able to do that job. Sometimes you need to look beyond the four corners of the paper. And when you look at Jody Dumas, even though we've talked about the four... You know, what exists in the job description, nobody up here doubts that Jody Dumas can do the job and do it well. And so, to me, that's much more important than the writing on the piece of paper. I know Jody, and I know Jody does a great job. He puts up with me, so he's got to be... He's got to be something for that. Right, Jane? That ain't easy. But continuing on the way we're doing now is not in the best interest of the school district. Even though Jody does a good job, at a certain point, he's going to reach a breaking point, and that is not going to be in the best interest of the district. And that will not be a reflection of Jody Dumas. That'll be a reflection of the school district and the school board of not taking those jobs seriously. And so, I think it's the best for the... I think he'll do a wonderful job. He does a wonderful job now, and I think it's the best interest of the school district to make that permanent. And so, then we can backfill somebody for his previous job, and so, we can be on more stable footing when they're chief operating officer. When I met first Scott Lumpy, Scott Lumpy said, "What do you want from operations?" My answer to him is, "I want to forget that you exist. I want to know that the buses arrive on time, that the food's going to be there. I want to know that the schools are clean." We don't even need to think about it. We know when those kids go to that school in the morning, no matter how much glitter they did in the night before, it's all cleaned up and everything looks nice, and it looks like elves came in and did it. And that's what I mean by forget that he even exists. And Jody's the kind of guy who can make things that we basically take for granted, everything he does, and that sometimes you forget that he exists because he does his job so well. And people like that are very hard to come by. And once you find people like that, you need to hold on to them and promote them and give them more responsibilities. So, I'll be supporting Jody Dumas for chief operating officer.
Mrs. Brown?
I also will be supporting Mr. Dumas for this position, even though we have to break with, while we normally do this, we've got some extraordinary circumstances. And if we want our schools running right, we need to put Mr. Dumas in this position and hire somebody for facilities so that we can, A, let him breathe, and then, B, work on, you know, those areas that he needs to work on, on the leadership skills, because he definitely has got it down on how to handle those different divisions. He's been there. He's been working them and has been working them well. Now, this past year, he's been having to do too many things. So, I think what we need to do is not only move him up to the title of the job he's been doing for this past year, but get somebody in there to help him, and this will do that. And so, we support you, Jody.
I'd like to remind the board that when Mrs. White was hired as superintendent, the job description said a master's... No, a doctorate. But we were able to change that job description because we felt Mrs. White could do the job. When Mitzi Cochrane was hired, we also had to change her job description, because she didn't have the requirements. And what a great hire that was been for us. So, I would never stop anyone from being promoted because you didn't have a degree. I went to night school for eight years, weekend school for eight years, to get my bachelor's degree, and I'm really proud of it. But I don't think I had... I wouldn't want to force anybody to do something. Someone who can do the job, that's what I'm looking for. And Jody can do the job without any hesitation or reservation. He is the right person for this job. No other discussion? Please vote. Okay.
One.
It's 5 to 0.
I think I'm funny.
You're hilarious. Okay. Where the heck are we up to?
39.
39. Approval of the audit committee nominees. May I please have a motion?
Can I have clarification? It says we've listed all of the ones that the board members nominated, but didn't... Don't we also have to add that sixth person that we...
That person's on there.
Look at the screen.
It's on there. The only one...
It's on the screen. Oh, he's not on my writing. Okay, then...
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I would like to move for approval of the audit committee nominees that were submitted earlier today for the audit committee. They are Mike Pender, John Crainer, Sue Meminger, Thomas Nate, Eric Robinson, and Joe Bentley.
Second.
Any discussion? And I will be chairing that committee. Excuse me. Mrs. Brown?
No, that's okay. I know. I know, I just want... I'm excited to see us move forward. I know we've been talking about our audit process, audit committee, so... And I want to thank all of the members who are willing to serve in a voluntary capacity. That's important, and all of them... I mean, same with the Financial Advisory Board is often lost on people that they are volunteers. So, thank you to all those who are willing to serve.
I'm not getting paid?
Anything else?
What?
Okay. No other comments? Please vote.
You know that? I think I'm hilarious.
Someone needs to...
You know how funny I think I am?
Yeah, I do.
Total is five to zero. May I have a motion for item 40?
I move to direct the board council to negotiate a contract with Mitzi Corcoran to serve as superintendent of schools.
May I have a second?
Second.
Under discussion?
No, you go first. Go ahead.
Mrs. Brown?
I just want to admit, I know somebody came to the board meeting and didn't even get a much chance to discuss. I wasn't quite sure what he was looking for, but we had talked about it in our superintendent before, and if there was anyone to bring their information forward, but we will be looking for a superintendent and be doing a search next month. We'll be looking at that.
Mrs. Goodwin?
I just want to thank Mrs. Corcoran for stepping forward. You know, I really didn't think you would do that, because you have so much on your plate, and you do all of it so well. And I think that your communication skills, your work ethic, which is scary, and I mean, scary good, because you work so many hours and you do things so very well. I just didn't realize that you would step up to the plate for this, but we really thank you, because I think it's very critical that we have your expertise and your leadership at this time, and I've always had a lot of confidence in you, as you well know, and we've worked well together over these, what, nine years? So, I want to thank you.
I will thank you also, Mitzi. I know it was... It was not just an easy thing for you to do, but you did. You did it for the good of the district. That's why you did it, and there's no better reason to step up to the plate than that, for the children, the 43,000 children that we have and the 6,000 employees. So, I thank you very much. You on again?
It's cracking me up. I am... I am excited to... You know, gosh, if you had to predict what would unfold in the last month or so, I don't know that any of us would have any idea, and I am actually appreciative that we've had the opportunity to come together and talk through things, and I think the right person kind of found its way for this interim. And I know it's... We say interim, and you are now the superintendent. I understand your initiative or your intention is in the interim, but, you know, I think that while I didn't have a specified person, and I think it was, do we do an interim, and then an interim, interim, and then look? I mean, it just... I don't know if that benefits or affords to the stability. I think that you bring a level of humility, and that's so important. I think you are truly the right person at the right time, but I was, obviously, as I've shared with you, was concerned about you being able to... And willing, but we have a lot... We have a lot in front of us, and so, I am absolutely committed to helping and support us get through the variety of things that we are facing. Very appreciative of this. I also want, just from the public standpoint, we discussed this at the workshop, and we're, as far as, I know superintendent contracts have been a hot topic in this community, and that is very clear that it's not going to be of any unique variety, but to just secure and only fair to Mitzi... Mrs. Corcoran, excuse me, for her willingness to serve. We need to solidify that, so I will be supporting this.
Mrs. Brown?
As I mentioned in our workshop, I was surprised when Dr. Vogel contacted me to say that he was taking himself out of this role of being the interim, but that he said he basically sat with Miss Corcoran for a couple of hours, and he said he found that it turned in more for... More than trying to understand where the district was, it kind of turned into an interview of him, of Miss Corcoran, because he does... He is part of that superintendent search, so he knows what it is it looks, and he said the stability that she will bring to this position is more important. And I said, really? Does she even want this? And I called her, and I asked her, and she said it'll be a good test of our...
Staff?
Their finance team and their...
I'm testing my succession plan.
Succession plan, that's what it was. She was testing her succession plan. So, I mean, she's way ahead of us in thinking of how things will run, and I think that's great, when you build in your own department to work forward and give them, A, opportunity, and, B, give them the tools, what it's going to need, because none of us are irreplaceable. And I'm glad you can step up and take care of this and understand that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Please vote.
I... I think it's not up.
Five. It's five and zero.
Okay, already did. All right, good. Mr. voted nine to one. The Russian. Aren't we supposed to be Ukrainians?
And that concludes...
No, no, no. We have one other motion. Item number 41.
I don't have that.
I move to approve... Authorized to approve the superintendent and council to file an appropriate civil action to appeal the administrative final order of DOA and the DJ versus Sarasota County School Board case number 19-0727E, 19-3012E, with the specific provision that the district continue to provide services to the student during the appeal.
Second.
We can't... There's not much that can really be said.
No, I have a queue up here. Bridgette Ziegler?
It's me.
It's you, okay.
It's me. I just wanted to point out the last part that Ms. Goodwin said, that they continue to provide services during the course of the appeal. I know we can't say much, but I believe I can reiterate what was in the motion. So, I'm reiterating what's in the motion, and I will be voting for it because of that portion of the motion.
Please vote.
Can I say that we're looking at some legal issues, that the concern for the student, I think it represents what we have in this motion?
The bottom one is not... The bottom one's not... Yes, I voted.
Somebody voted no?
Voting no, who is that?
Ziegler did.
So, the vote is four to one. Okay. The next regular school board meeting is Thursday, January 9, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. I wish you all a very Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and all other holidays. We are dismissed.